I think I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 7:31.
6:31.
6:31, sorry. And we will, the first thing, first thing that we need to do is nominate a moderator for the meeting.
I'm George J. Eckross and I nominate Lenny Rodrikus to be the nominee.
Thank you. Can we have a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then the meeting is yours.
Somebody, somebody else.
Ted McKenzie.
Ted McKenzie.
Yep. You need to appoint a clerk. Appoint, appoint Amy. Yep.
So, Amy, which will be appointed clerk? And I'll ask her to read the call of the meeting.
Up close, up close.
Okay.
There we go.
Can you hear me? This is the legal notice for the Town of Deep River, special town meeting this Tuesday, January 7th, 2020, at 6:30 PM. The purpose of this meeting is to approve the actions of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of December 10th, 2019, which was to approve the appointments, the following appointments, to the Community Health Committee, Joanna P. Giuliano, regular member, term to expire 12/1/2021, Carol Jones, regular member, term to expire 12/1/2021, Grace Crick, regular member, term to expire 12/1/2021, Russell G. Mark, regular member, term to expire 12/1/2021. Also appointments to Planning and Zoning Commission, David Basalone, regular member, term to expire 12/1/2022, Krista Rosiers, regular member, term to expire 12/1/2022, Daphne M. Stroud, alternate member, term to expire 12/1/2022, Kathy Jefferson, alternate member, term to expire 12/1/2021. Appointments to Zoning Board of Appeals, Donald Groves, regular member, term to expire 12/1/2022. This notice is dated at Deep River on Thursday, December 19th, 2019, by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion to approve the call. John Kennedy, Fairview Avenue. Second?
Second. Lauren.
Lauren. Lauren Gray.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections?
So, I will ask Amy to explain the voting process, which can?
Uh, please. I rise to make a privileged motion of procedure, that all the appointees be voted on individually tonight, and by paper ballot.
That is, thank you, that's exactly what Amy is going to explain.
Uh, I think you gotta make the motion go.
Okay.
Is there a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections?
Who was the second on that?
I don't, I didn't see it.
Okay. So, just to explain the balloting procedure, there are a lot of people here, we're gonna, we have our registrars in the back, ready with paper ballots. They do list each individual person on there with a yes or no spot. When it comes time, when discussion is done, and we've decided to go to vote, we're gonna ask that everybody line up, in a semi, you know, reasonable manner, it'll be crowded. Uh, you do need to have photo ID with you, your driver's license should suffice, you will have to be checked off, you have to be a registered voter, you'll be checked off on the registered voter list, and then you'll be handed a ballot, you can vote it as you please, and then you'll put it in the ballot box where Katie Wright is standing. Um, then you can either come back to your seat, or, or go home, it's up to you. We'll finish up the meeting with the count. Okay?
Will it be counted tonight?
Yes.
And who will count?
The registrars.
I, I have a question, why isn't it just a resident of Deep River? Why do you have to be a registered voter?
This is an electoral process, so you have to be a registered voter to vote.
State statute. Good? Yep.
Oh, there's...
Yeah.
I can't hear. I don't know if the microphones are working or not.
Test one, two, three.
She's up there trying to give it as loud as she can, this microphone doesn't seem...
Testing, one, two, three.
I don't think we'll hear too much from this, this table, too much tonight anyway, so that microphone and that microphone seem to be working okay. John, if you wanna try that?
This one's working.
How's that?
That one's working. That one's working. Hold it, hold it about a photo weight, eight inches, ten inches, whatever. Okay.
There is only one item on the agenda. Do I have a, a motion to approve the number, the item number one? Second? And we'll open this up for discussion.
What is item number one?
Item number one on the agenda, as read earlier, was the appointments, to ratify the appointments to the Board of Select, Selectmen on the committees.
That's as clear as mud.
It was in the notice, it was read, again, you'd like a copy of the notice?
Amy read the notice, this is, this is, these are the people that are being elected.
From all of them, please?
All of the appointments are on the same ballot, with a yes or no in front of them.
Yes.
John Kennedy, Fairview Avenue.
I don't know whether you wanna do this.
You can leave it right there.
Yeah.
I just want to ask, and also suggest, that when we have appointments coming before the town for approval, that the appointees be present, uh, have an opportunity to say something about their desire to be on anyone given commission, and why? Explain it to the members of the town, and possibly to open it up for some question and answer, brief question and answer. I'm not asking that that be done tonight, because probably most, everybody isn't here.
Yep. You can leave that right there for folks.
Yeah, that'd be better.
And we can hand it around if people don't wanna get up.
Is there any further discussion?
Go ahead, Jane. Oops, sorry. Let's have it, sorry.
Jane, do you need to go? Go ahead then.
Um, the newspaper has asked that everyone identify themselves before the...
And I will. Can anybody hear me? My name is Kim Clark, I reside at 46 Laurel Drive, Deep River. My father was Uarkham employee, and my mother still resides in town. I was born and raised in Deep River, attended school here, and moved to Chester. My husband Gary now decided to return three years ago to our current address. I've been quietly paying attention and taking notes since realizing the town was turning a blind eye on a commercial operation in my backyard. Ms. Jefferson issued an administrative zoning permit to Scott Kapouska for a sawmill after his property was placed under cease and desist by the Deep River Planning and Zoning Commission. The commission was consented, the application was not complete, and the proper site plan was not provided per Deep River zoning regulations. The concrete pads, sawmill, and fuel tank were in the wetland review. The entire operation was not permitted under Deep River Planning and Zoning Regulations. The state mandated B-100A was required for one property under one month, but then not required from local builder with an identical application the next month. The builder was questioned by a commission member in responding, Kathy said it was not necessary. Ms. Jefferson wrote a glowing review on an application for a parking lot in a residential neighborhood, and reported that it met all Deep River zoning regulations. Use was not permitted in that zone, and did not meet multiple Deep River zoning regulations. Kathy Jefferson demonstrated inability to enforce written rules, and conduct herself in a fair, unbiased, and equitable manner while being paid as a Deep River Planning and Zoning Enforcement Officer. These are not qualities I desire of a volunteer commissioner who should be making decisions that deeply affect the entire community. I urge you all to vote no for her appointment in the Deep River Planning and Zoning Commission. On another brief note, First Selectman Angus McDonald, please take a moment and reflect inward. Your actions have been and consistently appear to be motivated by self-interests which may lead many of us questioning your long-term intentions in this community. Thank you.
Yes?
John Kennedy, Fairview Avenue. Obviously, that was more appropriate for item number two, which shall be up next on the agenda.
Now, there is only one item on the agenda.
What am I, in the agenda? Oh, okay.
So, that's fine. I don't know if Kathy is here, and if she'd like to speak to, um, the allegations of a particular application. I'm happy to speak with my intentions for, for Deep River. I moved to Deep River 15 years ago, my wife and I moved here, built a business. Thank you. We created that business, we cleaned up a property that had been, um, not, certainly not vacant, but certainly, um, not maintained for many, many years. That business has done, has done only good things for Deep River, as far as I know. I know there are folks that are not happy with it, um, and I, I think that we are trying to be neighborly and address that, um, whenever we are addressed in a neighborly manner. Um, my intentions, my long-term intentions for Deep River is to, to remain as First Selectmen so long as the town will allow me to, um, and to continue, to continue to do my best to move Deep River in the, in the forward, in the manner that myself, and the Board of Selectmen, and the town at large, agree. I have, we have done nothing that I'm aware of, that is outside of regulation and law. It's my opinion that this Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen for the last four years, has been more open, more transparent than in my time in Deep River. Yes, there have been mistakes, and we try to correct those mistakes as they happen. We are simply doing our best, and what we think is best, and what we are elected to do, that's how, that's how town government works. We all get together and we vote. This Board of Selectmen was elected to move forward in how we believe Deep River will be best served. And that is why we're here tonight, because we've put a series of appointments together that we think move Deep River forward in the best way forward. If the town disagrees, then that's what, that's where, that's where we are. So, I can't, I don't know what to tell you, I live here, we've built a life here, and we plan to stay here. I don't know. I'm not sure that that's in this particular, um, call of this particular meeting, and I don't think at a special town meeting that you can go too far outside of the scope of what the call is. If you wanna have a conversation, if you...
You raised the issue.
I was responding to, to an alleg, to a question about... I was responding to a question about my intention in this town.
Opening a door doesn't matter.
I, I do not wanna get into it.
You can, you can ask that question. My phone, please.
I'm Sue Hugh Benz, I live at 38 Fairview Avenue. I would like to know how your business went from five employees to 20, 25 employees without changing their permit at the P&amp;Z. That's what I would like to know the answer to.
Well, my understanding of the, the answer to that question, is that we came back to the town when the sewers came down the street. We were, we were restricted only by the, the fact that our, our septic system would allow for two events a week. The sewers came down, and we were, we came back to the town for a special, so, a modification to a special permit. That modification was approved at Planning and Zoning Commission. Legally, we came to a meeting, there's minutes, there's minutes on record that show all that.
And I would ask that the discussion tonight pertaining to the, the call, the item on the agenda. Yes?
Hello, my name is Bob Ginder, I live at 137 Kirkland Street. I wanted to speak about asking everybody to not vote for Kathy Jefferson, um, for her, the position that she has been appointed for. I wanted to share two of my personal experiences with her, 'cause I don't want this to be hearsay about something else that I heard, I wanna share what happened with me, and why I feel that she is not qualified to do what she was being nominated to do. Two different incidents. The very first one was a year and a half ago. One of my neighbors purchased a piece of property around the corner from me, and I went to the planning and zoning office to look at records that are considered to be public records. She got those records out for me, and asked me what I needed to see in those records. If it's public information, I should be able to see them. She held those records against her chest like this. She's like, "Well, what do you wanna see?" And I told her, she's like, she kinda looked through it, and, "Well, it's not here." And, and she kept asking, "Well, what else do you wanna see?" And I'm like, "I wanna see the records of my neighbor who has purchased this property." She refused to give them to me. That you cannot do, they're public records, and you have to give those to me when I ask for them. That was the first incident. Somebody like that should not be on the Planning and Zoning Commission. The second incident, I went to go look at records for that same neighbor that I had an issue with. So, that neighbor also works very closely with Kathy Jefferson. So, I, in my opinion, now this is my opinion, this isn't fact, my opinion, I feel like she was protecting my neighbor, who she works with. So, I go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I go to look at these records, and this time, she was a little smarter, because she actually gave me the records. And I started making copies of those records with my cell phone. You are, according to the state law, you are allowed to make copies of those records. I have that, all that information, I have a regulation number, I don't remember what that regulation number is now. Somebody in her office at that time, not a Planning and Zoning Commission member, told me I was not allowed to do that. I told him, "No, you're wrong, you don't know the law." I asked Kathy to back me up, I said, "Kathy, as Planning and Zoning Commissioner, you must know what the law is, you know that I'm allowed to do this." She was silent. She did not back me up, even though she should know the law, and she just let the other person tell me that I was not allowed to make copies of these records. For those two reasons, Kathy Jefferson is not qualified for this position, and I ask that you not vote for her.
John Kennedy, Fairview Avenue. You may have this planned for your next, uh, item on the agenda, but I'd like to ask that the, uh, members of the Board of Selectmen, give us a small explanation, if they would like, of the appointees that they have made, why they made them, what their thinking was on what kind of appointee needed to be made for that type of commission, and why you voted to appoint these people specifically. And if, if you could do that, if you would like, I think that would help the public part a bit in understanding their voting.
Waste of time, you're in the meeting.
I'll be glad to.
John, I'd be glad to answer your question. The names were provided to us as selectmen, we looked through them. At the last town meeting, actually two meetings in a row, I ran one of them, as Angus was on vacation, and the second one was very well attended. And we all were asked if we support this. And in the beginning, I said, I wanna hear what the, I, in the beginning, I said, "I'm not for Kathy at this present time." But there was 35 to 40 people in the room, and I said, "On November 6th or November 7th, when we got elected for a selectman, I feel that the town residents should vote on this, not the three of us." And that's why I changed my mind to bring it to a town vote, John. Okay? Do I know every single one of these people, on every one of these commissions? No, I do not. I'd be lying if I did. But to move Kathy forward, I specifically said, "Let the town peoples vote." And I was also said, I was also told that evening at that meeting, that "Don't be bullied, and don't be changing your mind." But I changed my mind, because look it, there's 225, maybe 250 people here tonight. Let the town residents that voted myself, Jimmy, and Angus into office, like I said at the meeting. You voted me in, two years from now, if I run again, you can vote me out. But let the town residents have their voice at the table, and that's why I did what I did.
I'm Jim Olson. At that meeting also, um, which, as Dwayne said, it was very well attended, um, not as well attended as this, but, um, I expressed my concerns with Kathy. I, I do personally believe that she is qualified, I mean, she's going from an enforcement officer to just another one of many members on that board. But I, I voiced, I voiced my opinion at the time, that, um, maybe the best way would be to let it calm down a little bit, in relation to her, and let calm her heads prevail, and, and maybe bring it up later, later, at a later point. And I voted against it at that last Selectmen's meeting. And that's, and that's my, my opinion at the, at the present time.
John, I think your question actually spoke to all of the nominees, not to, not to just Kathy. And I, I think that I might be able to respond, I, I certainly don't wanna speak for, for these other two fellows, but for the majority of the folks on this, on this ballot, or on this slate, um, I would say something, and if it's, if it's inaccurate for you guys, then speak up. The vast majority of this ballot, of this slate, are incumbent members, all of whom have served and done a good job, and have had no complaints or anything, no problems against them. Carol Jones, for our Community Health Committee, is, is a new applicant for that committee, and, um, and she, she has to be on it, and, and I think she's certainly, her office is right next door to that, she's already helping out with the food pantry when Rosie is not there, um, it's, I think it's a good fit. The rest of this slate is incumbents, other than Kathy Jefferson, who I've expressed already twice at, at meetings, and, um, and will express again at this meeting. While I know the job of zoning enforcement officer, and I think you, you know the job of zoning enforcement officer, given your profession, um, oftentimes gives responses that people are not happy with. People can be, um, can, can be upset about that for quite a long time. At the same time, Kathy knows the rules, she knows the regulations, she knows the statutes, she knows how to access all of that stuff. Now, um, we can, we can go back and forth with accusations about what she's done, and if she comes tonight, then maybe she can, she'll be able to respond to that, but I don't think that that's what this meeting is about. This meeting is about why we think she's appropriate, we think she knows rules, we, we think that she's the best qualified. As soon as this vote is done, if it's positive, then we'll move forward, if it's negative, then we'll bring the next person forward that we think is the most qualified. That is why all of these members, and all of the people that we appoint, are thought through by me. It's not just an automatic, your name is there, you get out. That's, that's what I think, I think that it's, it's good for the town to be here to vote, I'm glad, whether you believe it or not, I'm thrilled to have this many people at a town meeting, I wish we had this many people at every town meeting. It, it's nice to hear people's voices, I'd like to hear them, um, speak in a, in a positive way, but, you know, there's positives, there's positive and negatives to everything, and that's why we're here tonight, and that's why this slate is put in front of you, because this commit, this Board of Selectmen believe this is the best group of people to serve this town in the best way that they can.
Lisa Vignani, um, born and raised here in Deep River, been here my entire life. I just wanted to say that, or remind you all, that we have 26 years of a man who worked in this town to change it. If you think back to prior to 26 years ago, what this Main Street looked like, what these buildings looked like, what this town consisted of, and what we lost when Uarkham left, and that man and the zoning officer Kathy Jefferson worked to pull this together, to create a tax base, to create Deep River to be what it is today. And you used to all fight with him for years, and then you all gave up at some point in time. So, this is all new to Angus, poor Angus, he's running by fire, but these fights used to happen a long time ago. But, my point is, is that Kathy doesn't do anything illegal, or she would have been arrested, she would have been taken to court and lost, she would have been stripped of her appointment years ago. She's the most qualified person to sit on this board, and I encourage you to vote for her.
You're good for Selectmen, you're not a good AB guy.
That's true.
I vote Angus down for AB. So, my name's Travis Perschur, I'm on the Maritimes Lane. I just wanted to call, come up here and talk a little bit about the voters of Deep River. We had an election, I didn't remind everyone, not 60, almost 60 days ago, the gentleman up there, obviously won. I think the reality is, the majority of the people in Deep River, not just people in this room, when I'm speaking about, elected this Board of Selectmen. I think we should let them do their job. I think the reality is, I hear a lot of things in this room that seem to be just basically putting sand in ears to oppose something that we don't like. But we're a democracy here in Deep River. Um, our democracy is run by elections, by registered voters, which we'll have today. But the reality is, I, I'm a little nervous, because it feels like we're trying to invalidate the election, trying to invalidate the people that we elected to doing their job. Right? And I think that that's something that we're getting really close to undermining what was a very fair and straightforward election, that these, all three of these men won, handled. So, that's it, that was my statement, thank you very much.
Good evening, Pete Lewis, Huckleberry Drive, Deep River. I think that everyone that came here this evening has a preconceived notion of how they're gonna vote. I think it's time to move into a vote instead of listening.
You just need to clarify that that was a call to the question.
Yeah, we got, we got a call to the question, that's a, that's a privilege.
Was that a call to the question, or was it a call to the vote? Did you just call the question?
I called the question, yes sir.
Okay. What's his name? You called the, what did you want? Discussion.
Yeah, wait, wait. You need to vote on that.
Discussion. So, we're gonna have a discussion on the call?
Yes.
John Kennedy, Fairview Avenue. I know everybody wants to get home, and, uh, I like, I really very much appreciate the positive remarks that Charlie and, and Pete have made tonight, but, Charlie, you're a little wrong. The legislature, legislature of this town are these people right here.
We had an election.
I'll ask you to sit down, I'll ask you to...
Charlie, I'm not... We can discuss it afterwards, until you're saying I'm wrong on the microphone, and bringing that up. Tell me what about my statement?
I'm not negating their importance, and that we had an election. The fact of the matter is, by state statute, in a selectman form of government, you read this in state statutes, the legislature is the town meeting. Can you speak into the microphone, please? The legislature in a selectman town meeting, uh, type of government, by statute, the legislature are the people at the town meeting. The administrators of the decisions at the town meeting are what the Board of Selectmen are.
And I didn't say anything about the legislative process today. What I talked about, if you listened, was about election...
Okay, Charlie, I didn't ask you, Charlie, I didn't ask you to sit down. Okay. Well, my, the reason I, the reason I, I felt... Thanks, Charlie, I, I appreciate your comments, I really do. My, my reason for bringing that up is that, first of all, everybody ought to know that your job tonight is the legis, is being the legislature. And for that reason, I ask that this motion to call the vote, um, be voted down. I think there's other talk that needs to take place, that people need to make their, their opinions known about the town government to our administrators of the town government, and I don't... And I don't think we've even cut the, the, you know, the thrusting up yet. I have things to say, I think other people do, about these individuals, and I think some positive things as well. So, I ask that, that that motion be voted down. Is there any other discussion on the call? Those in favor of calling the vote?
Aye.
Can't, can't say aye.
You gotta raise your hand, please.
Someone's got to count.
We are allowed to vote, I'm going to hold on. Come here. What's in it? Donnie.
Donnie.
Come here. Come here, I'm going to tell you right now, we're voting right now whether to stop the conversation and just vote. So, if you want to, if you want to stop the conversation and just vote, raise your hand. If you want to keep talking, go.
I got forty-three on this side. Forty-three on this side.
Which, where's the side? Because Gary's counting.
Yep. Oh, all right, both sides. Keep your hands up, please. You have to keep your hands up, folks, if you want to be counted, keep them up. Go try and count.
I did last time, I got twelve.
Please keep your hands up while we're counting.
Top two?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got up two, I got thirteen upstairs. Amy, do you have any?
I got a total of one oh two.
That's what I got.
Did you count upstairs?
Yes.
Okay, I got a total of one hundred and fifteen, counting upstairs.
You tall people can see more.
Yeah. All right. Let's go right here, okay? Three, one, two, three.
What'd you get?
Ninety-six.
Five, six, seven, eight. Ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
What did everybody else get? Anywhere close?
Two of us got a hundred and two, one got a hundred and fifteen, you got ninety-seven.
Thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty.
We can't vote, we got in trouble last time we voted.
Four, forty-five.
I was just saying, it's not going to work.
Well, this is not for the actual motion.
One, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, seventy, eighty, ninety, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-deuce, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, and then upstairs, I got thirteen, just checking in, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, fifteen.
Fifteen up top.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Now you got to do the math.
Those against the call of vote, please raise your hand.
Same thing?
Yep.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
The vote counting from thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Twenty.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. Okay. Across the end, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Don't you tell me, sit down. Huh? Say, don't tell me.
Twenty-nine, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, over here, forty-nine, over here, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four. You want to go around again?
What'd you get? Sixty-four.
Okay. Gary, you want to confirm there?
What'd you get?
What'd you get?
Huh? I had sixty-five on that.
That's what we got. Go ahead, Amy.
Okay, can I just ask one question before we go any further, though? How do we know they're all registered voters?
We don't.
It's a call to the question, right? That's always just a, that's the simplest way to ask.
Good question. Well, we have a paper ballot.
We don't know the registered voters.
To call the question?
This is just to call the question, the actual vote, everyone will have to prove they're registered voters.
I understand that, but we could still have people voting that aren't voters. We can't hear at all.
I don't know.
I don't know the end, I don't know.
I'm just asking how we know everybody's a registered voter, that's all.
I don't believe, I don't know, I don't have the attorney here. We can certainly, we can certainly take that.
To vote, to vote.
We can take that to paper ballot.
To vote, to vote on a referendum or a motion.
Yeah, it's an administrative motion, that's what I think, so. So, go ahead, John, if you've got some input.
Point of order.
Go ahead.
I move that for the purposes of this motion alone, it be assumed that everybody in the room are eligible to vote.
That's what, that's what, no, that's what we were thinking also, this is an administrative, this is an administrative and a privileged motion, not an election.
So, a second.
Yeah.
So, there's just, there's a meeting with vote, if you want to just push it anyway.
Okay.
Who seconded it? Who seconded that?
No, that was a second.
Second was back there.
Yeah.
Are those in favor?
There is no vote. It should just make the call.
The call was one hundred and eight.
That was one hundred and eight.
Vote was one hundred and eight in favor of calling the question, sixty-four against. Okay.
So, the vote in favor of calling the question was one hundred and eight, and sixty-four against, so the question is called. We'll proceed to a vote.
Hi, Elizabeth Griegen, I'm the registrar for Deep River. Unfortunately, our other registrar was out of town, but we had four people, half Republican, half Democrat, so it's totally fair. And thank you, guys, for coming and helping out tonight.
Thanks, Katie.
So, we had two hundred and ten people vote. One bad ballot because they voted in the same row, a yes and or no, so we disqualified that vote. I'm going to read off how many, what the vote was for each person because it wasn't just a straight for one person or not, so. Joanna Giuliani had a hundred and ninety-one votes, Carol Jones had a hundred and seventy, Grace Grick had one eighty-eight, and Russell Marth, one seventy-nine for the Community Health Committee. For Planning and Zoning, Dave Basol had a hundred and seventy-two, Chris DeSorres had one seventy-four, Daphne Stroud had one seventy-five, and Kathy Jefferson had sixty-six with a hundred and forty-four no votes. And Donald Growth had one fifty-five yeses. And that is the total.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, that concludes the agenda items. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Wait, who's second?
I second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against?
You need to adjourn.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out.